We're about to reconvene to talk, you know, talk about this issue. If you wish to testify, please sign up. If you don't wish to testify, that's fine, but we do, uh, we will call off of that list for testifying. If we have time at the end, we're only allowing an hour for starting, you know, from when we start, for public testimony. At the end of that time, if there are any questions, uh, we, you know, we might entertain them. All right. We're honored to explain the protocol.
I just wanted to make, uh, first of all, again, I apologize about the room. Um, this is our last meeting room, uh, that we had available today, where the other room we usually use, 1112, is booked, so I apologize about the tightness of the room. Um, I did want to also speak a little bit about the process. I think there's a little, I need to bring a little clarification to what's actually happening today at the county commissioners' office. Um, and it really has to do with how it's kind of, uh, legislation 101 here at the county, how a bill becomes law. And what we have, and the commissioners have two ordinances in front of them. One, to change the enabling regs of the Cape Cod Commission, and one to change the regional policy plan of the Cape Cod Commission to include, as you know, some wind turbine regulations. Those are proposed ordinances. They've been, uh, proposed by the Cape Cod Commission, and typically, an ordinance comes before the county commissioners, for them to sign it, to submit to the Assembly of Delegates. So no matter what action they take today, those do not become an ordinance or a law of the county. They would then go from the commissioners to the Assembly of Delegates for debate at the Assembly of Delegates. Um, so that's just to bring clarification to that, um, aspect of what we're doing today. Um, and typically, that's how an ordinance goes from being a proposed ordinance. It's signed by the commissioners, and it's presented to the Assembly of Delegates. So that's actually what we are talking about today. And Bill, just so, I'm sorry.
Just to make it clear, that if we do not agree to send it over, it would be sent back to, uh, to the Cape Cod Commission. We do not have, we do not have to submit it.
I, I don't agree with that.
Read the charter.
I have.
The charter says that in order for an ordinance to be submitted, it has to be submitted by the whole Board of County Commissioners.
There's actually, well-
If I may just state that I believe that our action, if we choose to do any, is at the end. The executive action always comes at the end, just as it does our budget. And if I look at this, it's an administrative signing to basically state that we have received it, and that we know that it's before the Assembly. If you look at both the Cape Cod Charter, the, our Charter, and you look at the Cape Cod Commission Act, there is somewhat of a discrepancy that I think we have time to work out. But this particular ordinance started in November. The process started then when the, the original ordinance with regulations was submitted to the Assembly. The Assembly made, uh, recommendations. They did not agree with it, and they redid a written statement as to the changes they would like to see reflected. This is a response to that letter. We do not have a pro, a role in that process until the end, when it's had a public debate and public process. I mean, I, I strongly believe that. I don't think that we have the ability to keep it from the Assembly. That would be keeping it from the public process.
This is part of the public process.
But we do not, we have never had a hearing on an ordinance in this room prior to it going to the Assembly. It has always been on the back end, and that is where our-
Actually, Sheila, no, you do, for an ordinance to get to the Assembly, there's only three ways for that to happen. The commissioners have to submit it, an Assembly person can submit, or there's a citizens' initiative process.
But this is a process that started a dialogue between the county commissioners and the Assembly in November. Now, there's new members on the Assembly. They may send it back again. That is fine, and I am not talking about the merits of this argument, one way or another. I am talking purely on the process of what we are doing. And I think that, um, everybody has a right to say what they want here. I have a, I will take everybody's comment into consideration, but I do not feel comfortable in saying that I would not let this go before the Assembly, because the Assembly is the body that has the deliberation, and the debate, and the decision, and then that decision comes back to us. That is intervening in that process, and I just don't think that that is where we are, particularly since these are the second, this is a response to the first set of regulations being submitted.
Well, I just simply wanted to say that of all the emails that I've received, and I'm sure you have received them as well-
And on both sides.
Uh, both for, for wind and against wind sighting on the Cape, that there are, were some misconceptions about what our role is, and some, some emails said, "Please do not approve these," and actually, that's not our role to approve these. Our role is simply to determine when it's appropriate, and now that we've received it, to send over to the Assembly where the public hearing is. That's the role of the Assembly, is to conduct the public hearings. But, um, the chairman set this up today, so that you had an opportunity to talk to us and, and give us your thoughts and your opinions about it. Because Sheila, I think, is right, at the end, when the ordinance comes back to us, we can reject that ordinance if we so choose.
Well, that's correct. But in order to get an ordinance in front of the Assembly-
We have to submit it to the Assembly, and that's what-
The commissioners, an Assembly delegate, or a citizens' initiative.
So what's before us?
And they have, the Assembly has a strict timeframe on dealing with ordinances of these types. And when they fail to or, work, to deal with that ordinance, there is no ordinance. Even when they sent it back, it has to go back through the process from square one again, which is why it's back here.
You're all right. So there, I, I believe, and I think we have time to have this resolved, because it's a, it's a, there is a, uh, conflict between the, the act that the commission is following and the, and the county charter, because in the Cape Cod Commission Act, and I read these very carefully, because I've been, I had had a feeling that everyone felt that we were going to make a judgment here today, and I don't think that that's our role. That is the role of the legislative body. And, um, the, uh, in the act, it states that an ordinance or, or any, any creation or changes to regulation is submitted to the Assembly. It doesn't even mention the county commissioners in the act. It is submitted to the Assembly. The Assembly can, has to have a public hearing within a certain time of, of framework. It has to deliberate and have an informed discussion and clarification of the issues in a public hearing, and then it has a vote. And the vote is really not even a yay or a nay. It's a vote either up, or we want changes. They don't, they cannot really say, "We're not going to have any regulations," because that is going against the act that has created our regulatory body. So, what, where we are, is we are in the process of them handing that, and it is, and then the Assembly can hand that back to them, and then the commission is to hand back their response directly to the Assembly. I think that if we, in that process that has already started, we are intervening in a point where we, it's already too late. We already, it's already the beginning of a process that is a dialogue now between them. That is my reading of it. If I am incorrect, I will wait for county council opinion, but I am no way going to either, if, if we sign these to go over there, it's not my indication of approval or a disapproval of the regulations. To me, it is doing the function that is our function right now, which is the administrative pass-through to the Assembly.
I agree.
All right. I have this to say, if you had it up, if you said your piece. Have you said your piece?
Yes. Well, go ahead.
Well, the only other thing I wanted to say is that I think, uh, the public discourse on this whole issue has been occurring mostly at the local level. Any town that has a plan to, uh, go forward with, um, installing wind turbines, then the whole public discourse occurs in each town. And I think if, the more we can have that public discourse at a regional level, I think the more that we will be able to accomplish, whether it's for wind turbines or against wind turbines. I mean, because people do have different points of view. So I think having your comments today, at least from my perspective, is very helpful. And, uh, well, that's all I'm going to say at the moment. But I'm, I'm glad you're here, because I think that the more we can get this public discourse out there, uh, when it's not relevant to a particular, uh, sighting or, um, installation of a turbine, I think, the more rational I think our discussions will be, and the more purposeful they will be.
Mr. Chairman, if I just might add one other thing. We are having this discussion, uh, with the anticipation that something is going to, uh, be decided, yay or nay, and as I say, my, my standing on this is not for either. That is for the Assembly to decide. Um, is that we do not have anyone here that is considered an expert from the Cape Cod Commission to be able to address misconceptions on both sides of the letters, of all of the letters that we have received. There are misconceptions as to what these will do or what they mean, and there is no one here, uh, this has been, uh, scheduled on a day where both the executive director and the director of the Energy Department is away on vacation. So there was no one here with the level of expertise to give the full explanation to these, and clarification to some of the statements that might be made here today, so I don't think that that's actually, um, would lend to a, uh, informed role, either way.
Regulations are intended to be rules. Rules are supposed to have certain elements. Rules are supposed to be clear, unambiguous, and if somebody follows the rule, there has to be a reasonable expectation of a, of, let's say, of a, of an outcome that would support the probability that, you know, that the outcome would be supported. My opinion is that we have an opportunity, as county commissioners, to avoid an additional public discourse about the merits of this, and send it back to the county, to send it back to the Cape Cod Commission, so that those issues, which are, in my opinion, not clear, not unambiguous, and do not provide an opportunity for an applicant to have a reasonable expectation of an outcome if they follow what has been lined out, I think that that, that, that opportunity exists, and I believe that, uh, we would facilitate the process of getting something that would be useful by doing that, rather than, in my opinion, kicking a can down the road and letting the Assembly go through a process where they decide if the whole thing is right or, or complete or wrong. The emails that I've received all have the element of, "This isn't the best thing. There are elements that are missing in this. This isn't perfect, but it is a start." Understand this, that once the ordinance is passed, as it's, you know, as it's been proposed, it is a law, and it is, and because of the, what I would call, the ambiguity that appear in some of the elements, and I hope that those folks that are going to testify today would speak to their concerns about particular parts of this, uh, proposed ordinance, because that is the issue that is at stake. Opinions about wind towers, opinions about whether or not it's appropriate to support it or not support it, are not part of the regulation. But it is part of the regulation as to whether or not this regulation, this proposed regulation meets or exceeds the needs of people in order to feel as though the process is a complete one. So with that, I will open it up to, uh, first, the public officials. Are there any federal officials? Are there any state officials? Are there any county officials? County officials?
Uh, yes.
You can come forward, Ron, or can you hear him from there?
Yeah, you guys can come forward. I'm Ron Bergstrom, I'm Assembly delegate from Chatham, and also speaker of the Assembly. I, I quite agree that, that the, the, the main issue before everybody here is process. We want it to be a clean process. There's very strong feeling on both sides of this, and I have no doubt that each side will take whatever advantage they can, in the way of legal challenges or procedural challenges, so I think it behooves both commissioners and, um, the Assembly to deal with it in a process that's, uh, clean, clear, and consistent with the, uh, charter and the acts of the Cape Cod Commission. Unfortunately, both mark, who states that the only way an ordinance can get to us is through the commissioners, through petition, or through submission by a delegate, he's absolutely right. But Sheila is also absolutely right. It states very clearly in the Cape Cod Commission Act that, that ordinances will be presented to the Assembly. It doesn't mention the commissioners. So we have a contradiction, and we're not going to solve that contradiction right now. But we can solve it in a procedural way. For instance, I, as speaker, could simply sign off on any ordinance that's handed to me from the commission, and automatically, under my, under my, uh, what you want to call it, sponsorship, but could go, and that's not because I'm for it or against it, it's simply because we have this contradiction. It's glaring, and it has to be dealt with. Now, I'd rather not do that, but, um, whichever action, but you have to understand that any delegate can present an ordinance to the, to the Assembly of Delegates, and we have quite conveniently a copy of the ordinance, which was submitted to us by the attorney for the Cape Cod Commission at our last meeting on Wednesday. So we have it in-house, and we had a brief discussion, um, during the session as to whether that would constitute a submission. Well, in the, in the eyes of the commission, it may constitute a submission, because they're acting under the acts that they were, under which they were formed, but of course, to the Assembly, who's acting under the charter, it doesn't constitute a submission, because it doesn't come from the three agencies. I hope you're following me on this. Okay? So, uh, once again, if, if I or any member of the Assembly were to sign off on this and sponsor it, it could be dealt with within the timeframe that's, that's mandated by the Commission Act, and that way, up or down, it would, I think it would be probably immune from any legal challenges on a procedural basis. All right? If we don't get it, then somebody could jump up and say, "Hey, you got it. You know, you didn't do anything to it." Now, the, the risk in this, and I hope you follow me just for a few more minutes, risk in this, if, if the commission or somebody in behalf of the commission were to say that they're handing it to us, um, is a, is a submission under the acts that they were formed later under, they could say that after the 60-day period, after 45 and 60-day period, it would take effect without any action. So I believe personally, this is my opinion, that it behooves us to get it, to take action up and down within the timeframe, and all these questions will go away. Okay? The earliest possible we could have a hearing on this before the Assembly, and I've discussed it briefly with the clerk, would be on the, and this is not a commitment, this is, is a potential, would be on the 13th of April. All right? And the earliest week, I mean, the earliest we could actually have the vote on the Assembly would be the 20th of April. That's lightning speed. But I mean, I'm, I, right now, none of this is going to, every, all of this is going to depend on the action that the commissioners take today, and whether they vote it up or down. I mean, after that, it's all, it's all up in the air. But, uh, that's my take on it, and that's where I stand, and I'm, I'm primarily concerned with getting a clean, unassailable process in place, so that we can decide up or down on these, on these regulations. Or failing that, send them back to the, to the commission from the Assembly, and have them, you know, amend them to a more acceptable form.
Are there any other, thank you. Are there any other county officials who wish to speak? Oh.
Thank you.
Patty Daly.
Thank you. Patty Daly, Deputy Director, Cape Cod Commission. Uh, first of all, Paul Nizwicki does apologize. He had a, a previously scheduled vacation, as does Ryan Christenberry, so they both already purchased, uh, plane tickets before he scheduled a meeting, and, and therefore they're not here. Uh, Paul Nizwicki asked me to read a letter into the record. It's dated March 23rd, 2011, and says, "Dear Commissioners, the wind regulations proposed by the Cape Cod Commission are before you, and I regret having a longstanding scheduling conflict that prevents me from being with you today. I respectfully request that you procedurally forward, forward them to the Assembly of Delegates for that body's consideration. In my opinion, to do otherwise would break from a longstanding practice of amending the regional policy plan, creating confusion and ambiguity on this important regional issue. Alternatively, following past practice, by forwarding the regulations to the Assembly of Delegates, will in no way compromise the jurisdictional responsibility of the Board of County Commissioners. My recommendation is that we proceed conservatively, in a direction that provides maximum opportunity for input by the public and all governmental organizations charged with deliberating these important issues by the Great and General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the citizens of Barnstable County. Regardless of any action taken by the Board today, I look forward to discussing the matter next week, and I am confident that we can move forward in a manner that is in keeping with the higher standards of the Board of County Commissioners. Respectfully submitted, Paul Nizwicki."
Have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay. Is there any other county officials who wish to speak? How about local officials? The chairman of the Brewster Select, Board of Selectmen, well, Ed Lewis.
Hi. Thank you, Bill Doherty. I'm Ed Lewis. I'm the chairman of the Board of Selectmen in Brewster, and I would make the following comments as regards this, the regulation and the process and everything like that, and I truly, I think you need legal counsel to figure out which way it's going, but, uh, one, because you, it's a catch-22. Elizabeth Taylor is the head of the, is Brewster's representative to the, uh, Cape Cod Commission, and she spoke about this at our Board of Selectmen meeting the other night. And essentially, she talked about the fact that if the commission doesn't come up with regulations, the state will, and that it's important that it's remain local. And I pointed out to her, and I point out to you, that the commission is the state from, as far as we are concerned. And what this regulation does, essentially, pro or con, that, I'm not speaking about whether you're for wind or you're against wind, what this regulation does is it takes wind out of Cape Cod. There will be no wind turbines on Cape Cod, regardless of whether it's, how it's cited, unless it's on Otis Air Force Base, which has enough space to do it. There will be no wind. And you're taking it away from the local communities. This is treating wind like we treat adult entertainment to a certain degree. We're not banning adult entertainment, but we put in zoning bylaws, so that we can't have adult entertainment. So we put in a Cape Cod Commission bylaw, which says we can't have wind, and we take it away from the individual towns to have the opportunity to have wind. Now, Paul Nizwicki will argue that we can go through the Cape Cod Commission, and the ambiguity that states is that you have a, uh, a, a sound, a sound ordinance in there, or a sound possibility, that pro-wind people can produce the best sound analysis that will say it will not harm people. Anti-wind people will produce the same, the same group of people, different organizations, but the same, uh, the, the same abilities, if you will, and they'll have the exact opposite. So therefore, then the Cape Cod Commissioner is then going to make a decision, who's right and who's wrong, who's the better of the two? Because you can find, you can find experts, consultants, on either side, and they will come forward with whatever you want to hear. So it, in my humble, uh, judgment, by doing this, by having this regulation, and you are correct, Bill, if this goes into effect, this is a law. This is a rule that cannot be, and it puts, it puts all of the programs at risk. You won't have it. And it takes, what it, what it really takes is, everything that is done with regard to wind turbine, the standard for wind turbine becomes Falmouth 1. Nothing else. Because that's where all, most of the uproar is coming from, and that's fine. I'm not, I'm not marginalizing that at all, but I'm saying, this, this law, this regulation stems from a, a lot of that, that complaints and those problems, and that law states, you're not going to have wind. And it not only does it as far as large wind turbines are concerned, it does it as far as medium wind turbines are concerned. Brewster is an example. We have a wind turbine bylaw, the same as a lot of other towns, and ours worked. We, I don't happen to agree with the way it worked, but it did work. It got down to a local level, and three members of the planning board said, "No." So it worked to that respect. And that's the way it should work. Each town should be able to do it on their own. But we allow individuals, as long as they have complete control of a fall zone, to have 130-foot turbines. Your regulation says, "Uh-uh, can't have them." Not unless you come before the Cape Cod Commission and produce some type of study that says it won't harm anybody within a mile and a quarter. Well, a local, very few people have homes that have neighbors that are a mile and a quarter away, but this regulation says that, can't have them. So it takes away all wind, except maybe a small little turbine that sits on top of a house that's 20 feet tall. Because anything over 65 feet is governed by this regulation. This is overregulation. This is going into the local people's ability to control their own town. And I, I humbly, uh, understand the people who are traveling around the Cape, going from town to town to town to talk about their individual problems. And that's fine. I don't, I don't, as I said before, I don't marginalize that. Let the towns control what they're going to do as far as wind is concerned. This regulation is not needed. It is not needed. It is overregulation, and it takes away the town's individual right to govern their own town. Thank you very much.
Is there another, are there any other local officials who wish to speak?
My name, uh, my name is Charlie Sumner. I'm the town administrator for the town of Brewster, and, um, I've been a town administrator for 31 years.
You are now the dean.
Yeah, I guess I am. I thought I knew regulatory issues, but now I'm even confused about what we're doing here today, but, uh, so you learn, you can, you can always learn something new. Um, obviously, I work for Ed Lewis. Ed's the chairman of the Board of Selectmen from Brewster, and frankly, I agree with all the comments, and he's already made, um, and, uh, so I'm not going to take your time to repeat those, but my concern is very narrow and very direct. The town of Brewster has been working on a project for two years, and when I first heard about the Cape Cod Commission regulations, I did call, uh, the commission office, and they said, "Oh, Charlie, Brewster's not part of this. You'll be exempt from this. You already have a permit." So I said, "Well, no, we don't have a permit. We're in the middle of a process. We've expended, uh, through CVEC, probably $450,000. Town of Brewster has spent many thousands of dollars. A number of town officials have spent hundreds and hundreds of person hours working on our project, and while the planning board has denied that special permit, we have appeal rights that we'll be making decisions on very shortly." And, and so we've invested a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of energy, and, and we've been impacted by these regulations, I believe. We should be exempt from these. We were in process long before these regulations were formatted and formulated, and I, frankly, based upon my call to the commission, they didn't know how it affected a project that was already actively, uh, in the process. And I just think it's unfair to Brewster, and, uh, and I don't think it was fully understood by the Cape Cod Commission. So that's, um, really the extent of my issues, although I agree wholeheartedly with the comments by, by Mr. Lewis. And I am concerned about the regulations on a larger front, just in terms of renewable energies, and, and what is a good resource on Cape Cod, uh, to deal with these issues, and I, and I think the regulations almost prohibit it. But, thank you very much, everybody.
Are there any other local officials? Yes.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Richard Elrich. I'm the, uh, energy coordinator for both the towns of, of Barnstable and Bourne, and I'm a resident of Nashpea. Uh, here in receipt of a letter that's dated March 15th, that was sent from a number of people, essentially asking you to reject, uh, the proposed amendments to the regional policy plan and the minimum performance standards, and to undertake or to recommend a stakeholder process, where both opponents and proponents can come together with experts in a more objective fashion than has been the case to date, uh, so that we can develop some regulations that could, more people than at the moment can be on board with. I want to quickly read the names of the signers of this letter, and then make a couple of other just general, uh, comments. Megan Ampler, Executive Director of Cape and Island Self-Reliance Corporation, John Clark, Director of Public Policy and Government Relations for Mass Audubon, Amanda Converse, Chair, Barnstable Renewable Energy Commission, myself, as the energy coordinator at Town of Barnstable, Barbara Hill, Executive Director of Clean Power Now, Edward S. Lewis, Chairman of Brewster Board of Selectmen, Joyce Mason, uh, the town manager from Ashpea, Edward Swinyarski, Chairman of the Brewster Energy Committee, as well as the Dennis Alternative Energy Committee, the Falmouth Climate Action Team, Falmouth Energy Committee, and the Harwich Utility and Energy Conservation Commission. Ultimately, we're opposed to the regulations as they have been drafted, because they are just clearly overbroad, excessive, unnecessarily restrictive, and not at all supported either by the science or the facts on the ground. I would also suggest that if you look at your own regional policy plan, the regulations as written are inconsistent and contradictory. Uh, and I would like to just quickly read a comment from the letter we wrote, if I may. "The individuals, committees, and organizations that have assigned onto this letter believe that the revisions to the review thresholds in MPS are unacceptable, as they are technically incomplete and inconsistent with the energy policy goals and standards in the regional policy plan. The regional policy plan acknowledges that the threats to the Cape's environment and economy due to reliance on fossil fuels and climate change. It explicitly supports development of distributed renewable energy sources, including wind, and calls for streamlining permitting and incentives to achieve that goal." These regulations would do the opposite of that, in my opinion. I want to just also very quickly mention some of the specifics. The reasons that we have as much concern as we do about the regulations, as has already been pointed out, the initial threshold is at 65 feet. There is no testimony, no evidence, of which I'm aware, where any turbine of that size, or indeed, up to a couple of hundred feet, or even 300 feet, has- or indeed up to a couple of hundred feet or even 300 feet, has resulted in the kinds of critiques and concerns that have been raised by the larger projects, specifically in, in Falmouth. Additionally, the shadow flicker standard of no more than 10 hours is, in our opinion, far too excessive and unnecessary than industry standard, is 30 hours per year, which in itself is a, is a very relatively limited amount of time. And there is so much new technology that's being developed that assists developers in making sure that there are no shadow, negative shadow flicker effects. And I don't think these regulations look at that. The, the 10 times rotor diameter standard is also arbitrary and capricious, and I can point out a couple of very specific examples. For a 660 KW turbine, the setback based on the 1.5 times the height of the turbine would only be 300 feet, a little bit less than 300 feet. But for a 775 KW turbine, the setback would be 1,600 feet. There's no rational nexus in terms of how that regulation plays out for the different-sized turbines. In addition, there's no noise study even requested for turbines of 60 KW or less. And in many cases, it's the smaller turbines, quite frankly, that have a, a more significant noise characteristic than the larger turbines. So again, there are a lot of people who want to speak. But I do believe that you're empowered, if, if you believe that these regulations as drafted and as presented to you are not meritorious or sufficiently credible to warrant being forwarded on to the full Assembly. So I do think that your charge is more than just an administrative sign-off, more than simply checking the box. I, I think you, you are empowered to look at these regulations as they're drafted, because they're not going to be, as I understand the process, substantially different once they make it through the Assembly. I don't believe, and I can be corrected, but I don't believe the Assembly is empowered to amend these regulations from the
That's correct.
So you're going to get essentially the same set of regulations. So if you do believe that 65 feet is an absurdly short threshold standard, then I think you would be altogether appropriate in sending these back to the Commission, calling for reasonable regulations. Nobody is opposed to regulations, even those of us like myself who live and breathe wind power because we think it's important for the health and energy security of this country. Even we believe and understand that you have to have reasonable regulations. You're never going to get a properly cited wind turbine without them. But these, as drafted, go too far and do not deserve your support or your forwarding of them to the Assembly.
Thank you. Are there any other local officials that wish to speak? Do we have, if not, do you have the
Does someone have the signee sheet?
I do. If anyone would like to speak, they sign in.
Could we start with it now?
Yes.
I think there's one more. I think this woman would like to sign in.
Is there somebody else?
Actually, why don't we start, and we'll take the top page, and then we'll circulate for anyone else who wants to speak. Can I have the top page, please?
No, sorry.
That's all right.
Sheila Bowen from Harwich is the first one on this list.
Good afternoon. I'm Sheila Bowen from Harwich. I, I do hope that we'd be able to extend the time allotted to more than an hour since the public officials
You wish to speak on the issue, Sheila?
Pardon me?
Please speak on the issue.
I am going to speak on the issue, Mr. Dougherty. All right, I'm proud to say I'm one of the people who travels from town to town on this issue, and it's for very good reason. I believe that the towns are not in a vacuum. They will affect their neighbors. There are not 500 or 400-foot walls around the different towns. And there are some projects right now that are in the offing that are going to affect their neighbors in Harwich and Brewster and so forth. So I think that's very important, and that is my one concern with the, the MPS that's before you right now. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My one concern is the one on municipal waiver, because I believe the, they should be a regional decision. And, and the only way to protect neighboring towns is to have regional oversight. I also hope that you will forward this to the Assembly at this point for public comment and review, especially since the Speaker, Mr. Burks, has mentioned that they are already in receipt of these guidelines. So I believe the clock is ticking. And they are limited to, is it 60 days from the time of receipt?
I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not
Okay. I believe, I believe the clock is ticking. So if it is held up here, then they are not going to have, be afforded enough time for public comment before the, their designated time passes. So I, I implore you to please forward it to the Assembly for, for open hearing and, and for deliberation.
Thank you. Did you have anything else?
Yes, just one, just one further comment. If you do decide to deliberate as a body today, I would also ask that Mr. Dougherty recuse himself because he is not just a liaison to the Cape Light Compact, he is also the Chairman. And if you look at the Barnstable County Fiscal Year Report for 2011, they have stated as their objective on page 29, to work in partnership with, with Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative to site and place wind turbines. So he would be a party to the placement of turbines as the Chairman of Cape Light Compact. And I think that would be a little bit confusing if he chooses not to recuse himself. I would hope that he would at least give full disclosure of which position he is fulfilling at the time when he is making public comment. Thank you.
Ron Burks is on this list for
No, I
Linda Salmon?
Hi, my name is Linda Salmon. I'm from Harwich. I think I have to say that I'm a little confused about what your role is at this point as far as where these regulations are going and what, what you're supposed to be doing with them. So I really hope that that gets cleared up for everybody. But I'm just going to read this letter that I've written. "I'm speaking to urge you to allow the Commission's wind turbine siting regulations to go forward to the Assembly. The Commission has spent many hours in public hearings, listening to, to witness testimony, reading emails and letters from concerned citizens, and doing research and reading on their own. And they have written these regulations according to their findings. Please do not negate all their hard work by sending them back to the Commission. There is a time restraint on these regulations. The state legislature is trying to pass legislation that will take control over all wind turbine siting. Cape Codders do not want to lose control over this issue, to be left at the mercy of people who don't even live in this area. And I am sure that you agree that you would not want to lose your jurisdiction over this matter. The main purpose of the CCC is to protect Cape Cod. Letting the state take over your authority is a very bad idea. These regulations are reasonable safeguards that will allow the wind industry to build turbines once they have proven to be safe and effective. I know that some of you support wind power, but if you believe wind power to be such a good thing, then surely you must believe that the wind industry will have no problem proving that wind power is safe, green, and, and truly useful. I believe it should be on the wind industry's shoulders to prove the wind turbines worth before we consent to sacrificing our wildlife habitat, our property values, our tourist industry, and our physical and mental health. You owe it to the Cape Cod residents to ensure that their lives will not be forever changed by these wind turbines. Please do your job and protect the people, not the wind industry." Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list was Richard Elrich, who's always speaking, then Ed Lewis, Charlie Sumner, Patty Daly, and the next one was Michael, sorry, Secarek?
Eric.
Secarek. Excuse me for mispronouncing your name, also from Harwich. Do you wish to speak?
Yes.
You put your name down on the list to speak. Do you wish to speak?
As a, as Bill said, I'm from Harwich. I'm also the past Cape Cod Commissioner Rep. from Harwich. I served on many of the regulation plans that we did. At the time, regional policy plan, et cetera, DCPCs, regulations such as that. So I'm somewhat familiar with the Cape Cod Commission and its processes, although I know it's changed over the years. I know that every time we put together any type of a regulation or anything, a lot of effort went into that. And there was a lot of discussion, and we always held a lot of public hearings. We did that on the regional policy plans. We did that on everything. This issue with wind turbines, whether I'm for it or against it at this point in time, really has no bearing on the fact that, I believe that this is a starting point. This is something that had to be done. It was put together, it was sent back to the Commission, some work was done on it, and I'm sure a lot of due diligence was put into that. At this point in time, we're at a point where I feel that because of the exposures to the various towns of any type of a turbine, you could put a big turbine someplace on the town line and affect a neighboring town, and there would not be any control if there wasn't some overriding total Capewide or countywide regulation. I think it's important that this be passed on to the Assembly delegates, and I think it's important that people have some say and that the delegates get a chance to debate this again. This is their second shot at it, and it's a revision of what was there before. And I feel that that's important because, as you said, well, if it becomes a law, that's fine, but the Assembly of Delegates has the authority to turn it down. It doesn't have to become law. Just because it gets to the Assembly, that's another point for open discussion. This has been such a contentious issue across the Cape. I think the public deserves the opportunity to, number one, observe, the members of their Assembly debate this issue, debate its merits, debate whether or not the changes that were made to were sufficient enough that they'd all be happy with, and then make that decision and let the public have comment on that. And then the delegates can make a rational decision after that point in time. That's all I would say. I respectfully request that you would turn it over to them and let that debate continue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Lily Green.
Thank you.
What do you represent?
I'm Wellfleet. I live in the town of Wellfleet, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I believe that the citizens of Cape Cod entrust that the Cape Cod Commission and the Barnstable County Commissioners have the duty to protect their health and their safety. A major reason why I chose to live in Wellfleet was for the beauty of the natural environment, the quiet, tranquil natural environment, the scale of the human imprint upon the land, and the absence of industrial noise and the absence of industrial visual impacts. The location of the wind turbine that was proposed for Wellfleet was in the middle of the national park and on the highest point of land in that area. The trees at that location are approximately 15 feet tall. A 65-foot-high wind turbine in the National Seashore towns, that is Eastham, Wellfleet, Sherron Province town at least, may indeed tower over the towns 50 feet or more once a concrete pad is constructed underneath. This is like a five-story building in a town where two-story buildings are the highest anyone can build. Even a 65-foot wind turbine, in my estimation, is out of scale in one of the seashore towns. And from my standpoint, I truly believe that the regulations are not enough for my town and the seashore towns. I feel that, given that factor, that I understand how the Cape Cod Commission came up with the regulations of 65 feet. I understand the dilemma, and I understand that the local, there would be local control in addition to that as an overlay once the regulations have been passed. So in, in dealing with all 15 towns on the Cape, saying a 65-foot threshold is what triggers a DRI, I, I guess I'm willing to live with that. But I, but I don't think that that's an unreasonable restriction for height. And therefore, I understand this is before you, and from a procedural standpoint, I would urge you to, to bring it up and to pass it along to the Assembly of Delegates. We do have to start somewhere, and it's my understanding that the technical bulletin would define things, and again, too, it's my understanding that each town would then have local control on top of that. And I really hope that I'm taking people at their word for that. And why do I think this is so important? It's because I'm looking at this map. And this map is a U.S. Department of Energy map of the wind resources, and there's a scale of one to seven on here. Seven is the best wind resource possible, and you can see that all of Cape, of the Cape land is a two or a three. That means it's marginal affair. But look at what happens if the weather bill passes. Here's another map. And the weather bill from last year passes. What happens to Cape Cod? 100% of Cape Cod becomes desirable because the threshold for wind development is lowered. And that's why I think that regulations are really very necessary at the regional level here on, on the Cape and Islands. And what we're talking about, according to the Associated Press, an article published last August on the 23rd, and, and of course, you can check this out on the website, is that Governor DeVault Patrick's goal of generating 2,000 megawatts of wind power in Massachusetts by the year 2020, an effort that could require the installation of up to 3,000 turbines, the bulk of them on land. Now, I don't know, if I do the math and there are the big turbines, it's about 1,000, but if I then research further and they say, well, they're about 30% efficient, maybe we could be talking about 3,000 wind turbines. And I say, look at this map again. Where do you think the turbines are going to go, even if there's 1,000 of them? And I think that's why it's really, really critical that from a procedural standpoint, we move forward with the regulations. I also provided a CD-ROM to the Assembly of Delegates, and I provided the same information to the Cape Cod Commission. It prints out to a six-inch binder of science-based material about health impacts alone. And I know that if you talk to the people at the Cape Cod Commission and you're interested in reading this information, and I gave it to John Arubak, the Commissioner of the Department of Public Health, was my, in a meeting with Sarah Peaker, our State Representative, last July 30th, the same information here, and I believe that DPH and DEP is actually going to have a study on health impacts in Massachusetts. So that's my, what I've heard. And so what I'm saying to you is there's a lot of credible scientific evidence out there. There's science-based, evidence-based journal articles in very reputable, internationally-recognized journals, and there are health impacts. And all we have to do is look at Falmouth and the 50 people that I know of that are impacted from an adverse health, health standpoint. So I do feel that regulations are very important. And what, I'll just say the very, my, my last statement would be, if you cannot see fit to vote to the approvals of regulations, then I ask you to consider a DCPC. It's my understanding that your vote to do so in a letter to the Cape Cod Commission, to that effect, begins a moratorium. The process is halted, and as a community, we come together, research the issues, study the potential adverse impact, have a series of open discussions with, within the Cape wide community, convene a panel to work on the regulations, and develop a plan to address the topics. Now, this was sent to me by somebody in Germany. This is where he lives. I don't, I don't know how many wind turbines on Cape Cod, you know, 1,000 across the state would, would impact, but I mean, I don't think this
You can take that and pass that around, because we can't really see it.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sarah Coté? I might be mispronouncing your name. Is it?
Cody, actually. I'm from Harwich, and I'll just echo Dick Elrich's comments regarding the sign-on letter that was sent. He already read all of the signatories, and I feel that everyone who was part of this letter has some serious concerns about how this will impact not only the Cape Cod, but their personal towns and energy committees in being able to move forward with wind in a way that the towns feel is appropriate. So again, I'd just like to echo his comments, and we feel that they should be sent back to the Cape Cod Commission.
Thank you. These are the end of the people who had signed up to speak. We have a few more minutes. Are there any questions? Yes.
Why don't
I'm sorry, I got to hurry, Tony, for just a second. We'll hear you for a minute.
You sure? Yeah. Okay. I guess, I hadn't planned on saying anything until, my, my question is, and my, what I'm going to say now has to do with the process. Myself and a couple of other delegates asked Janice, the new clerk, to, to let us know what the procedure is following, whatever goes on here today, which we don't really know what's going to be. I anticipated that you folks were I anticipated that you folks were going to take a vote, so I mentioned that to her. I says, if it's approved, if it goes down, if it wins. Here's what she did, what she came up with. If the county commissioners reject the revised regulations, their new proposed ordinance, which I assume is 1104, it will not come to the Assembly, even with a negative vote, unless it is introduced by a member of the Assembly delegates and receives a 75% favorable vote from the Assembly. If it did receive a favorable vote, we would schedule it for a public hearing. If, according to the home rule charter, is being interpreted correctly, it also appears that if the proposed ordinance is introduced, delivered by the county commissioners, and at the same time, at the same meeting, is rejected by 75% of the Assembly delegates, it will not go forward and will not be scheduled for a public hearing. She suggests that maybe legal would be contacted and voted. I just, based on what I've heard from Sheila and from Mark and then from Ron, I don't know how anything could go anyway. Everybody seems to have a different opinion as to how it should be scheduled, if it can be voted or can't be voted. So that's why I wanted you to hear what our clerk researched and came up with.
There was another question back here.
Is there actually a comment we may have?
Yes. What's your name?
My name is Margaret Burke, and I live at 62 Clarissa Joseph in Plymouth. We're the last house in Plymouth. We're border born, and I just want to say, I would urge you to forward the proposed regulations, if you can, to the Assembly of Delegates, as there has been public input on the issue at publicly announced meetings, and the public gave testimony, both the proponents and opponents, and as you're passing this on to the Assembly of Delegates would be a validation of that public democratic process that has taken place. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I believe that everybody's had an opportunity to speak. All right. And now, at this point, I think we have to decide whether or not we want to conclude the discussion at this point and take it under advisement, or do we want to continue the discussion at this point?
I have a question.
Sure.
And I have a question for Tony. If there were any... If it were any other ordinance, and it had something to do with the impact on Cape Cod, it was from the Cape Cod Commission, either their thresholds, their enabling thresholds, their chapter H, chapter A, if we, the commissioners, stopped that here, what would be the impact on the Assembly of Delegates' role? Anything...
Based on what Janice came up with?
What I am saying is, in just essence, in public process, by not allowing those ordinances to go forward, I have a feeling that members of the Assembly would have something to say about that, that we were making decisions. That is really the role of the Assembly of Delegates, and their role is to have the public process, the presentation by the experts, their clarification of the issues. And I am saying this because I am not either for or against it this. I am concerned about public transparency and process. And to stop it here disallows your role to vet that openly and procedurally so that the public can hear. And you cannot, according to these types of ordinances, your role is not to say they're never going to be, because there's a cry for something. Your role is to send it back until everybody is satisfied. And by us jumping in here, we're the ones that are making that decision, and it clearly, I believe, states. And I think that there were members like yourself and others, who I've heard from in the past, would be a little suspicious, if not, you know, that your power, which is your role, is now being asserted.
Well, I didn't see where you're coming from, but as I read this, as I read this, if the commissioners do not want to vote positively on an ordinance, the Assembly still has the right to bring that ordinance to the Assembly without your approval.
Exactly.
By a vote of 75%.
Right.
So I don't think that what you're doing or what you're talking about negates the authority of the Assembly delegates. What it does is, it puts the onus on us, because you know that just about every ordinance that comes across, and you've sat with us for a couple of years there, if it gets to a point where the commissioners don't like something, chances are there's somebody on the Assembly that doesn't like it. So it will come to a vote.
It's not my concern whether they like it or not. I am talking about public process and procedure.
Right. And I'm talking about procedure, too. If you guys say no, we still have an opportunity to say yes, is what that says to me.
Mr. Chairman, I came here today with what I believe is a clear understanding of the process of what our role is here, and that is to move this project forward if we choose to, or to move it back to the Cape Cod Commission, either or. I think it's really important for this board to take a vote. I don't think that we should just let it go and give that responsibility over to the Assembly, because it's possible to do that. But I think that with the comments that were made by Ron Bergstrom, and by you, and by some others, I think that we need to take one week to have these legal issues resolved so that everyone is very clear about what the county commissioner's role is, what the Assembly's role is. And on the basis of that, I would move that we take it on your advisement for one week and vote on it next week at a meeting to be set up.
Is there a second?
With the amendment that if indeed the Assembly has...
You can't discuss it unless there's a second.
Yes, there's a second.
For discussion.
I would like to be able to state that if it is true that the speaker has received these and it has been accepted, and we're not sure how that process went, so I'm not saying it has or hasn't, but if it is determined that they received those last week and we are now putting this off and holding up the Assembly's deliberation for another week, that the clock does not start ticking on that, regardless if they receive them or not technically, that the clock starts ticking on our decision. I am ready to take a vote now, so I have no problem with it. And still have clarification.
We have two very well knowledgeable people here from the Cape Cod Commission. But in reading the Cape Cod Commission Act, when they create a proposed ordinance, they send it to the Assembly of Delegates. It's sent to them as the notice for a public hearing. It's sent to the Assembly of Delegates. It's sent to the county commissioners. It's sent to the press. It's sent to a number of different groups. That is a notice of a proposed ordinance for a public hearing. And then the next steps are the ones that... Now, the Assembly having received it, because they've received a notice of a public hearing, it's still, in order to move the process forward, the commissioners normally would take a vote to formally send that to the Assembly of Delegates, which, at that point, the clock would begin to tick on this 60-day hearing. It's my understanding. I have read both our charter and the Cape Cod Commission Act, and...
I would like to suspend the rules to put that question...
Oh, we don't need to suspend this.
I have one comment to make before we get started. I was present at the Cape Cod Commission when they reported that they had a regulation in front of them. However, when they reported that, they did not say what the origin was, nor did they know, because there were no cover letter indicating that it was a submission, other than they had it in their possession. I would submit to you that because there was no indication that the regulation that we're talking about, while in their hands, was not noticed as being submitted for consideration by the Cape Cod Commission, that they have not indeed received it. So...
I don't understand what you're saying. You mean, are you talking about the Assembly of Delegates or...
The Assembly of Delegates...
Or Cape Cod Commission?
No, I'm talking about the Assembly of Delegates.
Okay, you kept referring to the Cape Cod.
Announced that they had a copy of the regulation from the Cape... It was identified as being from the Cape Cod Commission, but they did not notice that it was received or forwarded from the Cape Cod Commission. They just noticed, or the speaker noticed, that it was in his possession.
Based on what you just said and what's been going on, when Mark gave me a copy of the agenda for today, it says the approval of ordinance 11-04. Now, if that's the current ordinance...
No, that's not.
Because I haven't got that one. I have 1101.
No, 1104 was the one you passed on the fees last week.
Yeah.
Right.
Now, let me just, you know, I think we all have opinions on what's been done and what hasn't been done, and I'm sure I'm right, but I'm not a lawyer either. So I think your advice is sage advice. We need to get Bob Troy to sort out what has happened and what hasn't happened, and that will tell us where we are with this whole process, and that way we can know where we're going forward.
And if... And I would like to have a comment. The reason I say this is because this is such an important issue for everyone who lives on Cape Cod. And I think the public needs to know and be comfortable that whatever is being done, either at our level, or the Assembly level, or the Commission level, is absolutely appropriate under the laws and regulations by which we do our business. That's why I do this for a week. Because if people are going to walk out of here, you're not going to know what's right or what isn't right, and what we're going to do or not, but next week we will all know.
Well, and based on what Mark just said, you don't have the actual wind regulations to vote on today. You have 1104...
No, they have. They have. They have.
What have been reviewing?
It's not...
Yeah, you've assigned it.
We received them last week.
We have 1101.
Okay.
If we can recognize Jessica Wilgus?
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Jessica Wilgus, and I am the Cape Cod Commission Counsel. I am a lawyer, and we have submitted these regulations as were required to do. I believe that it has already been stated that part of our process, what we need to do, in particular, because these are amendments to the regional policy plan, they're also controlled not just by the regular county charter, the administrative code, but also there's an ordinance that applies to amendments of the regional policy plan. Both Section 6 and Section 8 of the Cape Cod Commission Act require us, in the instance of an amendment to the regional policy plan, to submit it to the Assembly of Delegates. The Cape Cod Commission Act then specifies, "The Assembly of Delegates shall hold a public hearing." Even more specific than that is ordinance 91-8, which refers to the process by which the submission occurs. Because it's an amendment to the regional policy plan, one of the things that has to happen is, within 30 days of the commission's close of their public hearing, we are required to submit it both to you, the Board of County Commissioners, and also to the Assembly of Delegates. We did that, and to address the question about the formality by which it was submitted, we're required to submit a report on the proposed amendments and a request for that ordinance to be heard, which we did. We perfected that. We had to do that because the close of our public hearing happened on February 17th, and we had to do it within 30 days. So we had to do it by your meeting last week, which we did. And both the Cape Cod Commission Act and this ordinance then state that the Assembly of Delegates shall hold at least one public hearing. So that's where we are.
Okay. So what you just said is, before... There really is no reason for them to vote because the Assembly hasn't had a public hearing for the draft?
I would disagree, Tony, because you have to read that with the charter, because it's an ordinance. As soon as you use the word ordinance, the charter specifies... How does an ordinance get in front of the Assembly of Delegates? You just said your part of it.
Right. And those are ordinances that...
Getting back to the issue at hand, which is a motion on the floor to get clarification from counsel, I believe that there's even more reason to have this matter vetted out by our counsel. And at that point, if we are in agreement, then are we ready to take a vote on the motion?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm ready.
And we'll have Bob here. That's what I would suggest. That's the easiest and best thing.
And I would ask that Jessica Wilgus be here as well.
Okay. So restating the motion that you made...
Is to take it under advisement for one week and to place it on the agenda the following Wednesday at a time to be determined for further discussion and a vote.
So are you saying to delay a vote for two weeks?
No.
For next one week? Okay.
But we will have the benefit of the advice of our counsel at that time. Okay.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you very much. And thank you all for coming. And I think that one of the things that you've seen is that we really try, as much as possible, to put all these matters in front of the public to get what I call a group discussion.
This is where the charter... Because there are four minutes passed on ordinance... And this is why we need to be able to align when the...
We're still on. Are we going to continue our discussion? Are we going to withdraw? I would move to withdraw. Do we have other business?
We have other business? We have to sign. No, the only other thing that I wanted to announce to you is that the most recent ECHO prescription program...
There's no other business. I move to withdraw.
I second.
All right.
All right. Do you have to say it? You're on camera.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.